Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our March 23rd council meeting in order. Welcome those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us by television. At this time, we will prepare for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Ask that Pastor Chris Altrie of the Temple Baptist Church if he would come lead us to the throne, if we could all stand for the prayer. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening. Father, I just want to thank you that we live in a city with great leaders who are humble, cooperative, who lead with compassion and mercy and grace. Father, thank you that you have brought these leaders to the table. You've given them wisdom and strength to serve in these roles. Lord, I just want to thank you that they set a standard for our state, for our county, even for our nation, for how we are to work together to make this city great, to make this city a place for all people to come and live and join and prosper. So Lord, we ask for your blessing tonight as we make decisions that will honor Jesus Christ as our Lord. We pray this in his name. Amen. Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Pastor, if you would, thank you for that prayer, sir. If you'd tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry.
Yes, sir. My name is Chris Altrie. This is my son Samuel. My wife Rebecca is at home tonight. And we actually just returned back to North Carolina after spending about 10 years in New England. And so we're thankful to not be in the land of winter right now. It's great to wear short sleeves. But I'm the pastor at Temple Baptist Church. And so it's good to be back. You know, one of my heart's desires in ministry is to be able to connect the local church to business leaders and nonreligious groups so that we can make a healthy community that glorifies Christ. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Welcome back home. And thank you for that great prayer, sir.
Thank you.
All right, council, we'll move to the announcements. We'll move in the following order. We'll go with council member Jensen. No, I'm sorry. Council member Hendros, Benevente Hendros, Jensen Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Alhamdulillah. The holy month of Ramadan has begun yesterday, March 22nd. Ramadan is one of the five pillars of the Islamic faith and commemorates the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, receiving the first revolution from Allah that would become the Quran. So to all of our Fayetteville community members of the Islamic faith, Ramadan Mubarak from everyone on City Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Correction, I'll go to Councilmember Ingram.
No, it's me.
Okay.
I completely messed that up. I'm owning every bit of it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce, every year, we come, it is the Greek Independence Day on March 25th. And in the audience, we have Ms. Lexi Hasapias and we have Councilmember Hendros, which is the president of our community, that a lot of people probably don't know that, in the Greek faith. So I just wanted to make sure that we wished that, we wish everybody Happy Independence Day on March 25th. And then we have another holiday coming up that I think that we are all going to be celebrating for the next week while we're in DC. It is Councilmember Ingram's birthday tomorrow.
Oh, a holiday, huh? Well, happy birthday.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Happy birthday, Councilmember Ingram.
All right, we're not gonna put you on the spot and ask you how old you are. All right. Well, happy birthday. All right. All right. Thank you. I'll go to Councilmember Hendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just would like to invite everybody. Tomorrow is PWC's ninth annual Power and Water Conservation Expo. PWC's here, you can wave, PWC. Thank you for all that you guys do. So tomorrow, Friday, March 24th, from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, right down the street at Skyview on Hay, 121 Hay Street. It's free and open to all. There's some free swag there and you can learn how to conserve some water, so.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. And like to also let everyone know that Councilmember here will not be joining us. He's with one of his important community watch meetings tonight that he needed to attend. So Councilmember, we wish you well in your meeting. At this time, councilors, we move forward to City Manager's report. Mr. Manager? All right, thumbs up. Councilors, we move to the approval of the agenda. entertain a motion to approve. We'll check on our iPads and see how they're doing. Is a motion by Councilmember Benevente?
Yes, sir. I move that we approve the agenda.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hendros. Discussion on the motion? Jen, how we looking? We good on?
(Inaudible).
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of discussion for our process here. When we press motion and second, does that not get noticed?
It doesn't. It was, it listed under viewed speakers. If you press motion, yes. But he was under viewed speaker, so I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Didn't notice. All right, motion carries unanimous. Madam Clerk, item 7.0 is the consent. Councilmember Jensen.
That would be Ingram.
Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 7.03 and 7.09.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve with the exception of 7.03 and 7.09 for separate up or down motion. Second by Mayor Protem, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries unanimous with those present. Item 7.03, thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Mr. Manager, I know this was an item that I had asked one of the council members to consider just for a little explanation. We, the Governor's Crime Commission granted the city of Fayetteville a public safety grant. Can you explain what those proceeds will be used for?
(Inaudible) coming forth now.
Good evening, Cap.
Good evening, Council, sir. Chief Braden is unable to be here. He's on a crime prevention panel up at Broadell, so he sent me in his stay. So, the Governor's Crime Commission through a grant through the Office of Juvenile Justice and Liquidity Prevention allowed us to push forward with a gun violence reduction strategy. It's a two-pronged approach. One will have community workshops where we will target the pipeline from school to jail and kind of intercept that pipeline. The ideology behind it is that we will partner with our local community to have workshops with a cohort of about 15 to 16 juveniles that will learn life skills, pro-social activities. They will be partnered with police officers as mentors and they will create a community mural. And that community mural will represent what they believe will be their strategy as the cohort to reduce the gun violence.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Council, we have any questions? Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I do have a brief question. I know that we are, we're doing something with like specific zip codes. Is this citywide or will it tie into that?
So, according to the app, application that was sent forward for it, for the grant, the partnership with the schools and the schools and the sheriff's office, we will identify the children that that will be part of this cohort and they will, it's about a six to seven month program. And there will be certain key milestones and things that they have to hit prior to graduating.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't kind of going with that zip code model.
No, ma'am. This is a complete.
Thank you.
Citywide initiative.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, council, look to you for action on this item.
Mayor Colvin, I move that we adopt the special revenue fund project on this.
Second.
All right, I think I had a, so this is a motion by Councilmember Benevente, it was seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, look to you for action on this. All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, item 7.09, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we have a representative of staff and, I guess, our real estate department to come up and kind of give us some kind of background on the city's position and what our interest is as far as kind of setting this up for the future with other offers that may come?
Yes, ma'am. So, what you were presented with tonight was an offer from DK Enterprises to enter into a long-term lease of 20 parking spaces, 15 of which behind their proposed development at 111 Maxwell Street and the Franklin Street parking deck, and the other five on a surface lot within a one-block radius of 111 Maxwell. The offer did include 15-year initial term with two 15-year options to renew with specific rates locked in for each of those terms, with the first term of 15 years being locked in at $50, the second term being locked in at 55, and the third term being locked in at 60. They did request the right to be able to sublease to other enterprises owned by Mr. and Mrs. Sanitz, who own DK Enterprises without written consent from the city. So, as you noticed in the CCAM, the city could not recommend their proposal because of those two items, the fact that they were locking in at a specific rate for the 15-year terms, and the fact that they were requesting the ability to assign or sublease those spaces.
Thank you.
They did today send another proposal that removed the sublease agreement amongst themselves. They revised the sublease portion to say they would like to be able to sublease to a homeowners association at such time that one is established for the Crest Lofts. And then they revised their pricing structure to ask for $50 for the first 15-year term, 55 for the second 15-year term, and then whatever council rate, market rate for the spaces are for the third 15-year term.
Okay, so 15, 15, 15, what, 45 years?
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilmember Ingram or council, you had any questions, comments?
I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion to deny. And I also would like to follow this up with another motion.
All right, so motion on floor is to deny current proposal. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your action on, this is to deny.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The way the CCAM reads is kind of a negative, so we just want to be clear that a green, you know, what the green would mean and what the red would mean.
Right. So, to vote green means to deny. To vote red means to vote against the denial.
Another way to say it, and I think if it's supported by the motion, which is, the motion is to not accept the proposal.
The current, there you go.
The proposal. And, but that is a dead.
All right, so am I clear on that before we vote?
For the record, I'd like to revise my motion to not accept the proposal.
All right. All right, so motion on floor is not to accept current proposal is listed in 7.09. All right, council, look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, and Councilmember Ingram, you had a follow-up?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we give direction to the city manager's team and city attorney's office to revisit the discussion that we had in our agenda briefing to look at pretty much a counteroffer and also look at how we move this forward for other entities that would be presenting similar offers in the future.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, as stated, for staff to reengage the participants, seconded by Councilmember Hendros. Discussion on that motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you. As the staff reengages with this group, I think it's important that we look at what we typically do when it comes to subleasing practices as well as renewal practices as it relates to, you know, any changes to the pricing for parking spaces and that they're commensurate with what the market value is. So as you guys are re-engaging that, you know, they look at those, you guys look at those things specifically.
Yes, sir.
For the record, we discussed all of that upstairs.
For the record, now it's for everyone to hear.
All right, all right, all right, council. So we had a motion, we had a discussion phase, so Councilmember Ingram, you can discuss. Or if not, Councilmember Benevente has made his statement and we have the vote ahead of us.
Move to close discussion.
All right. All right, so council, please give your vote. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous, 9-0. All right, thank you, Ms. Kusia. Ms. Kelly, thank you. All right, this time we prepare for, to hold hearings where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals desiring to speak at tonight's hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address prior to the start of tonight's meeting. We begin with staff presentation and then we'll move into the formal hearings. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed for each item. Individual speakers, however, are limited to three minutes each, less by previous arrangement where a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the council. When the light changes, when you're notified, you have 30 seconds. And then at the conclusion of your time, you will be notified that your time has expired. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Good to be back up here. We have, we are coming to you tonight with some seasonal text amendments. Before COVID, we were doing these twice a year, spring and fall, trying to get back into that rhythm of bringing things to you. And these are kind of to ensure that the regulations that we have in our UDO reflect modern development standards and community preferences. For these spring of 2023 items, they're kind of split up into three different categories. The first are cleanup. They're kind of to clarify and simplify some areas of our code. The second are things that have come to us from developers or the community at large and their items to, again, help streamline the UDO. And then the last one is more of a policy issue items. If you recall, back on February 6th, we came to you at a work session, kind of presented these as a first glance. We, since then, we've taken these before the planning commission. And then we are here tonight to discuss and hopefully adopt these 15 ordinances. As we go through them, again, they are split into three sections. What we would like to do is to try to simplify things. I'll be doing one section. Mr. Green here will be doing one and I'll cover the last item at the end. But as we go through each section, if we could pause at the end and have any questions or discussion and then get a vote on that particular batch, try to pull out as many that we can to go ahead and get approval on. And if there's some that have some discussion, hold those over kind of toward the end. Again, these are fairly simple ones, so hopefully we won't have a lot of discussion with them. The first one we have is regarding accessory dwellings. And this is in our single-family 15 residential district. Currently, all of our other single-family residential districts and our agricultural residential district allow you to have accessory dwelling units. For some reason, our SF 15 district was left out of this in the UDO. And with our current housing shortage in our community, we thought we would try to take advantage of every opportunity we can to have extra units out and about. The next thing is recording time for variances. Currently, our zoning requires that once a variance is approved, that the applicant has 30 days to record that variance with the registered deeds office. It's the planning commission's recommendation and staffs that we just completely remove that requirement, that they no longer have to get them registered and that they don't have, they don't expire after 30 days if, because they don't register them. Variances in other communities don't go through this step. And variances typically are something that just runs with the land. When you get approved, it's always there on the property, no matter what. The next one is dealing with off-street parking and minimum parking standards. Couple of years ago, we came before you and actually, I'm sorry, maximum parking standards, actually got maximum parking standards taken out of the UDO. There are two areas, this one and one other that you'll see in this list, where the reference to maximum parking was not taken out. And so we're looking to just take out that reference in this table at this Accessory uses on large lots. This has to do with our agricultural residential district. You may recall about a year or so ago, maybe two now, council made some adjustments to the UDO so that larger properties could have larger accessory structures on them. One of the residential districts that was, or the one that was left out of that was our agricultural residential. And that's our biggest residential district, our lot district. So typically, those have the biggest lots anyway. And so we're just wanting to, looking to fold our agricultural residential zoning into this accessory uses, being able to be larger, the bigger the property is. Same as what all the other residential ones are currently. Reduction in specimen tree fee. This came a couple of years ago out of the UDO committee. And city council actually lowered it from $100 per caliper inch to 50. However, there was one section that we found where there's still a reference to the $100 fee. And so we're just trying to clarify that at this time. Landscaping applicability, this is another section that came from the UDO committee. When it was adopted a couple of years ago, the language that came from them was missing a word except. And since then, it's made for some very confusing times of trying to figure out, these are on lots of two acres and less. And without the except in there, it really leads to confusion as to what this particular section of the ordinance is giving. So, this one is the other one that deals with maximum parking. Again, we, a few years ago, took out maximum parking standards from the UDO. This is the second section where it was missed at that point. And so we're just trying to clean up the UDO. So there's not a reference anymore to maximum parking standards in this section as well in our alternative parking plan. And so that concludes all of the ones that we had listed as cleanup items. At this time, you know, if you have any discussion. Now, this is a public hearing, so once we're done, we do need to open that up. And I don't believe we have any speakers. Okay.
All right. If that's the case, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Harmon before we close the public hearing? All right, Madam Clerk, you need to have...
We have no speakers.
All right, we're closed the public hearing. Council, look to you for action. Councilmember Hendros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve 8.01 as presented.
All right, as most, you still have second half, don't you, sir?
We still have some other items. So, this would be text amendments 23-02 through 08.
82 through 08?
Yes.
I move that we accept 82 through 08.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Hendros, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on items 002 through 008. zero-zero-eight. Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous by those voting. All right, Mr. Harmon, we'll go back to you.
Wow.
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Green.
Yeah, change, don't we? Hi, Mr. Green.
So the next section are what we sectioned off from development community and the community at large. So the first one deals with the setbacks in the newly-created DT two district. So when we recently adopted and created this district, we allowed drive-throughs to be developed on certain roads, major roads in the district, but we found that when one came in to develop a drive-through, because of the maximum setback from the property line, they couldn't actually put a drive-through there safely. So what we're looking to do is to amend it, to allow staff the flexibility, to increase the maximum setback for drive-through uses based on what would be safe and, you know, on a site-by-site basis, to make it so that they can actually develop a drive-through on these properties. The next one deals with our neighborhood commercial zoning district. Currently, financial institutions, banks with drive-throughs require a special use permit in that district, so we're looking to remove that requirement and just allow them as of right. We don't see any reason why they should have to go through the SUP process. A bank with a drive-through is not normally a use that causes any issues in these districts. The next one deals with basically the fences in front of electrified fences. So this amendment will allow anybody that gets an electrified fence approved to have a six-foot fence in the front yard in conjunction with that approval, it'd be a raw iron or similar type fence. Currently, if you have an electrified fence, you have to have a fence in front of it, but we found that in a front yard right now, you're only allowed a four-foot fence, which isn't tall enough, so instead of having them to go through multiple processes to get the fences approved, they would, they would just be allowed to have that six-foot fence as long as the electrified fence was approved. Next one deals with specialty eating establishments and the office and institutional zoning district. Currently, they are not allowed. These are eating establishments that do not have drive-throughs. These are small, normally like ice cream parlors, coffee shops. We're looking to add that use as of right in the O and I district because we feel like they would, there would be a benefit and fall in and be a good use for that zone, that zoning district. The next one deals with gasoline sales and access points. So currently, that, there's a section of the UDO that limits gasoline sales to two access points, so basically two driveway cuts, and then regulates how far away they have to be from each other, a hundred and fifty feet. We've run into a lot of issues on certain sites where they couldn't meet these requirements, so we talked to traffic services and we, they decided and agreed that we would put some language in there that would basically allow city traffic or DOT to remove, to review and approve, you know, the additional access points or change, a reduction in those separations on a case-by-case basis. This one deals with increased setbacks in residential districts. There's a section that requires that if your building wall exceeds twenty-five feet, then your setback increases by five feet. It's a very confusing section, it really doesn't make any sense. It's hard to figure out where exactly the measurements are, but we're looking to just eliminate that, that extra requirement, that we just have to meet the normal setbacks. We don't really see any reason why if it's twenty-five feet instead of twenty, you know, four feet, that it would need that extra five feet away from the property lines. This one deals with floor area ratio. It's in the hospital overlay. It's the only place in the city that we have a floor area ratio. After looking at it, it doesn't seem like there's any good reason to actually have the floor area ratio, and it actually appears, and it's had in the past where people have had to get special approvals to go over it, and staff believes that it, that it will probably in the future affect the development of, an expansion of the hospital, making them have to go through special approval, so we're looking to remove the floor area ratio regulations from the hospital overlay. So that includes the development review, development and community section. Any questions?
All right, council, any questions for Mr. Green? All right, Mr. Mahendros, Councilmember Mahendros?
I move that we accept this middle batch of text amendments.
So oh-nine through fifteen?
Yes, sir.
All right, what about sixteen, Mr. Harmon?
It's coming next.
All right, all right, this is motion by Councilmember Mahendros. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor Colvin.
Seconded by Councilmember Benevente. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Those voting, all right, and Mr. Harmon, last item for this.
The last one we have for you for the evening is outdoor recreation and, or commercial recreation in the office and institutional zoning district. Currently, it's a use by right. However, your, your higher commercial districts, more intense, you're required to have a special use permit for this. The O and I district is typically the one that is closest to residential districts, and your outdoor commercial recreation are your things like your putt-putts, your mini-golf, the batting cages, things like that, even drive-in theaters are included in that list. And so there are things that really are not all that compatible with residential, and so we, our thought was to take that out of the O and I. It still will be in all the other commercial districts, though.
All right, hadn't seen a drive-through theater in a while, but I understand. All right, council, any, need a motion to, all right, Councilmember Mahendros?
Move to accept.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Mahendros, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries unanimous. I'm used to looking at this thing that's blank, so, all right. All right, moving to item eight point zero-two, again, a public hearing. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Get this one. Last one we have before you is a council-requested text amendment. This came about during your February sixth meeting while we were presenting the seasonal text amendments. It was requested of staff to do a text amendment to chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances looking at our boarding of, adding in boarding of commercial buildings. So what we have done for TA twenty-three nineteen is we took what we already had in place with residential properties, and in our current ordinance, it calls them residential structures, we took out the word residential and gave a new definition to structures. Everything else in it is exactly the same as what is now done for residential buildings, would now include commercial as well in this boarding ordinance. Council have any questions, the staff?
All right, so with, with that, we'll get them to hold to the end of the public hearing. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
We have no speakers for this item.
All right, we will close the public hearing. Council, any questions or action? Councilmember Mahendros?
Mr. Mayor, based on some of the questions and concerns we discussed at the dinner meeting upstairs, in addition to the, the three hour, the three-year timeframe as well as other concerns, I move that we send this item back to staff and maybe bring it up at a future work session.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Mahendros to remit this back to work session, seconded by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Any discussion on that motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on that motion. Okay, motion carries unanimous by those voting, so we'll look for that at an upcoming work session. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. All right, council, look to you for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All right, y'all have a good evening.